There we go. We are now recording.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
How's everyone doing?
This one. Hi Karen.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing all right. I like your blue glasses.
Oh. I have so many. I don't know which one is on. These are like so colorful. Okay, since you mentioned they're blue, I'll change to black.
Oh, no. I like the blue. It's very on-brand for City of Falls Church. You need the blue city background then.
All right, Susan, I'm going to re-up on social, just to remind everyone that this is about to happen.
Definitely, definitely pushed it out there the past couple days.
Yeah, we had an ad in the Falls Church News Press for it as well.
And it was served up in the focus.
Someone read her focus tonight. All right.
That's right.
It was maybe for Claire to say something, but she's doing her social media.
She's busy, exactly.
You can, you can keep talking it up Cindy. I can listen.
Keep stirring the pot.
Oh, very nice.
So, there you go.
Yep, and I definitely will cook up a good amount of federal money. Actually, I want to get the cookbook too.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, the community cookbook is finally ready. Wreckin' Parks had a call for recipes from the community back in November or so. And I think we all learned that it's really kind of difficult to lay out a cookbook. It takes a lot. So it's finally ready in PDF form, or you can order a physical copy for $5.
But we're cooking up, we're cooking up a well-done budget, right? It's going to be ready in two weeks.
That's right.
And we're stirring, let's see, we're keeping the wheels going on, just cooking the flames, so we have good transit and good ridership and the recovery.
Perfect.
I'm sure we can, not top Claire, but come up with some more bad ones.
All right, good evening. We have, we have lots of folks coming on board. We are recording already. All right. Welcome to the town hall. Maybe give it a couple more minutes, see who else can join us tonight. And as always, if you want to ask a question tonight, we probably don't have too big a crowd, so can certainly raise your hand through the Teams platform. Or if you want to put in the chat, hey, I have a question, or here's my question. Certainly happy to.
I know we're going to get at least a few more people. We just had an HSA meeting and we did the best we could to end in time to come here, so I know at least a couple more are coming.
Wonderful. Well, then that's a good reason to wait a couple more minutes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for letting us know that. I feel like we should have some hold music. We need Falls Church City Band music playing or something. Andrew Acosta. We need something City of Falls churchy.
He could do the Browns Hardware song.
There you go. Although something very interesting, we have open enrollment for city employees this week. And so we've had some MS Teams presentations from the various insurance providers and all of that. And one of the insurance providers ran a video that had some generic music playing in the background. So I uploaded to YouTube so that employees could get to that video if they missed it. And YouTube marked it as, oh, this is a copyright infringement. There's a song in here that we recognize and you haven't paid for it. Like, that's, that's astounding. The YouTube bots are very accurate.
Artificial machine learning at work.
Yes. So yes, if we were ever to run music, I would definitely make sure I had the copyright permission or made it a Creative Commons public domain song. See, we have a couple more people who have joined us for the town hall. We are going to wait a couple more minutes. We hear that a board and commission meetings are getting out now. So thank you for joining us. I hope everyone on here has been able to get at least their first dose of the vaccine. Because I think we all want to get back to normal.
Tomorrow.
Good for you. Wonderful.
And Susan, what were the numbers that you posted today in terms of Falls Church residents who have gotten at least one dose? It was a, it was a pretty big number. It was almost 9,000 people in the city.
I can go to that.
A high 8,000.
It was in the focus. Let's see.
It's in your focus Wyatt.
It is in your focus. That's where he had it.
That's where I noticed. I think it was like 8,900.
Yep, almost exactly 8,954 doses administered to city residents, but more than 3,400 fully vaccinated. And then in the state, we have 3.2 million with at least one dose, almost 2 million fully vaccinated. And I heard VDH representatives say today, this is, I thought this was really interesting. So on their VDH dashboard, what are they saying? Do, 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 do. So they're saying it's a, now I can't remember which number. So on the VDH dashboard about vaccinations right now, so that 3.2 who have received at least one dose, there's, that's 37.9% of the population. Now that's the entire population of Virginia. So that includes kids younger than 16 who are not yet eligible to get the vaccine. And he says, when you adjust for that, we're closer to 50%, and I'm assuming having one dose, not 50% having, being fully vaccinated. So think of it as Virginia eligible, 50% of the people who are eligible have had at least one dose. And I, that's awesome. That's wonderful. Let's keep those numbers going, please.
I think that similar math for the City of Falls Church is something like 75%.
That's great.
Which is really very impressive.
Wonderful.
What's your control for the population under 16?
Oh, we have a Tina here. I'm hoping that's Tina Erman, who is our budget season superfan.
I was happy to see the cookbook out in the focus.
Oh, so glad you noticed. Wonderful, yes.
Well, I admit it, one of my recipes.
Oh, very good.
And I see people here. I can't wait to look at it. Those are fun.
That's great. Yes, it premiered in the focus tonight, so we'll definitely promote it more tomorrow and in the coming days. Ooh, Claire, if it's easy for you to grab a good link for it to put in the chat, that would be great, if you're able to.
Yep, give me one second.
And Wyatt always.
Yeah, it was fun in the focus, all your plays on words. On food words.
She's very good at puns and play on words. It is her forte, for sure.
Is it, is it free online, Susan?
Yes, yes. The cookbook is a PDF.
Awesome.
And we've also put it in the platform issue. So Claire will send along some kind of link, and then you can buy a printed copy for just $5.
Well, Susan, I would say let's go ahead and get started with the business at hand. And do you want to say any preliminaries for our guests who have signed up, just about how to participate? And then we'll do some introductions and then we'll get started.
Certainly. Tonight for our town hall, if you have a question, feel free to raise your hand through the MS Teams platform. Or you can also type in the chat. And you can either type, I have a question, or you could say, I have a question, and here it is. And I can read it aloud for you. So however you'd like to go. And that's it for me.
All right, well, very good. Well, welcome everybody. My name's Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager. And let me ask Mayor Tarter if he'd like to say any words of welcome also before we get started. Or as we get started.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you Wyatt. I just wanted to say a few brief, brief words. Good evening to everyone for starters. And also just mention my colleagues. Most of my colleagues in council are joining us tonight. So we have Vice Mayor Mary Beth Conley, who's on, Letty Hardy, Phil Duncan, and Dave Snyder. I'm not sure I saw anyone else, but that is the majority of our council. We're very interested in what you all have to say. And so I'd like to welcome you to this town council, or to this town hall. The purpose is twofold. One is to give you information about the proposed city and school budgets. And the second part is to hear your questions, thoughts, and opinions about it. We've had a tough year in a lot of ways, but we've persevered. Our renovated library is on track to be completed in the next month or so. Our 10-acre development is also on track. We appreciate the cooperation of our friends at the schools. We can see the fruits of that collaboration with the new high school, which is absolutely gorgeous and it's just opened up. It's very exciting, I think, for all of us. We also have a Whole Foods that's been recently approved coming as well. We're also able to provide rental food, small business relief to those in need over this past year. But we understand that many of our families and businesses are suffering. And we're cognizant of the tax burden that applies to everyone. And we are trying to balance the important needs of everyone, of all the different varying constituents. And so also I'd like to mention the federal relief is greatly appreciated. But there's a lot of still unanswered questions about that. So you hear a little bit more about that this evening. But again, just want to thank you all for coming out to look forward to your input and to hearing your thoughts. So thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to you Wyatt.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. And so what we will do tonight is we want to share information. This is a recorded session. So if people aren't tuned into this meeting live, it will be available to the public to be able to download and watch at any time. So you know, we will get information out, but we also, this is an opportunity to get questions and comments from the public on the budget process. Our, our schedule tonight is to start with the school budget. And Peter Noonan, our school superintendent, will present. He's joined by his Chief Operating Officer, Kristen Michael. And Michelle Kopic, their budget director for the schools, is also on this call. So we'll start with the school presentation, and then it will come back to me, and I'll just make an introduction about the general government budget. Karen Bawa, our chief financial officer, will talk about our revenue picture. Cindy will give an update on ARPA, and then I will wrap things up with a discussion on where the sort of the main new initiatives are in the budget for, for everyone's awareness. And so that's the, that kind of our agenda. And Peter, let me turn it over to you for the school presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, City Manager Shields. Can you see my screen okay? Oops. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, and I see the screen, but it's, it's, it's on my screen already. There it goes. Now it's big.
How are we doing? Is that good?
I think we're looking good.
All right, well, great. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight and to be part of the town hall. Very excited to share the school board's advertised budget. But before I do, I want to just thank a couple of people that are probably on the call and listening throughout Falls Church. First, I want to thank our school board chair, Shannon Litten, and our vice chair, Laura Downs, and the rest of the board members for their support and their work through this budget process. But I'd also like to, and I'd also like to thank Kristen Michael, our chief operating officer, who you mentioned earlier, and Michelle Kopic, who is our budget director, for their incredible work pulling together all the financial numbers, looking at the revenue picture, the expenditure picture and the like, and helping us in many ways find ways to achieve our goal. So this evening I have about 17 slides. I'm going to go through them very quickly. This presentation will be available for anyone who wants to see it in the future. But as I, as I talk about tonight's school board's, at school board's advertised budget, the one thing that I want to be really clear and upfront about with the community is that the school board does their school's budget in advance of the city's budget. So the school board has already gone through their process of holding three public hearings on the budget and have done all of the community outreach with respect to the school board's budget, which then gets folded into the city's budget. So tonight, what I'm prepared to share with you is the budget that has been forwarded to the city council. And it was presented by our chair, Chair Shannon Litten, some time ago, to be folded into the budget with the city. So let me, let me just begin with, starting with the valued partnership. As, as Mayor Tarter mentioned earlier, certainly the fruits of our labor and the fruits of our collaboration and partnership have, have borne out with respect to opening our incredible new high school up on the hill. And I want to thank everybody, not just the city council, not just the school board, but our community for really working collaboratively together to ensure that we have this really great high school now and for the future. The high school itself is about 99.5% done, is fully occupied with kids every day. And now the attention has turned to the outside so that we can work through getting our new fields, our new tennis courts, and then also the demolition of the old high school. And I would encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to go by the old high school and see as it's coming down, it's really quite something to see. I want to preface this evening's remarks with this, this is the third year in a row consecutively that we have presented a budget that does fall within the budget guidance that has been presented to us from the city council. And we're very excited to once again come in at guidance, following the rough contours of a yet-to-be ratified, but a good handshake agreement around our revenue sharing agreement that really utilizes in many ways just the organic growth within the city. And this partnership has been something that we want to continue and, and really value. So we appreciate the city council's support, the community's support, and all of your investment in our schools. Just very quickly, and I won't go through all of this, but just a reminder of what our mission is with respect to being student-centered, innovative, and inclusive, and really becoming, and really leading around being the premier international baccalaureate school division, not only in the country, but looking at the world as well. Ensuring that we have IB tenants of the International Baccalaureate Program in all of our classrooms as part of our culture. Ensuring that we have a really strong caring community and culture, which is something that is unique to the City of Falls Church. And that we also pay attention to any gaps that students may have as they continue in their academic career. So that the time they, by the time they leave our high school, they are prepared for college, or they are prepared for work, or they're prepared for the military, whatever they decide. But they will be prepared for whatever outcome they desire. This, of course, is our 2020-21 state-winning championship women's basketball team. I'm sorry, it's a shameless plug, but I am so excited about the work that they have done to win the state championship. But they are our, our prelude into the 2022 revenue picture. So our projected revenue is really predicated on the transfer from the city council in many ways. We are heavily reliant because of the general income and wealth of the City of Falls Church on the city council. And so 81.5% of our operating revenue that we get into the City of Falls Church schools does come from the locality. And when you combine that to the, with the state funding that we receive, that's about 96.2% of our overall budget. We do receive a little bit of federal assistance, and primarily that is for IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act money. And we are projected to increase in revenue there by about 1.1% of all revenue. And about 5.6% are only $31,000 in increased federal awards. But there is, there is a heavy dependence on local property taxes and the City of Falls Church and this general government for the funding of our schools. The guidance that we received earlier, as I mentioned, that we were falling within guidance. But the guidance that we received in December from the city council, based on organic growth, was to not exceed organic growth, which is currently 2.5% in our, our coming budget. And that represents a 2.5, I'm sorry, that represents a 2.5% increase, which allows us a starting point of an additional about, just north of $1 million as a starting point. It follows the revenue sharing methodology that I indicated before, that we would live within guidance. And any additional revenues that the city council and general government were to realize would then ultimately be shared out as part of our revenue sharing agreement at 50/50. And again, this is the third year in a row that we've met that revenue sharing guidance and spirit. Our budgets, as I mentioned, come from multiple places. But I wanted to just give you a quick, a quick review of the state revenues. Based on the governor's budget, we're looking at a state aid increment of about $4,883,000. That's to increase about 20,000, almost 21,000. And that is about 0.4%. So it's not a significant amount of additional state aid that the schools will get. However, one of the things that we are excited to report is that it does look like the economy and sales tax in the state of Virginia continues to remain strong. So we are projected to increase in sales tax by about $307,000, which is an almost 12% increase in projected sales tax. The next is the expenditures. And here you'll see a really great picture of some of our musicians in our new theater at the new high school, playing socially distantly, which is great. And our priorities with respect to expenditures really fell to compensation. I think it goes without saying that our teachers have done an extraordinary job this year. And, and as hard as it's been for our families, it's been equally hard for our teachers. We've asked them to change instructional models six times. We've gone from a hybrid to online, back to hybrid, back to online, back to hybrid, and now back to face-to-face. And they have done an extraordinary job as not just a teaching staff, but a full staff, whether it's transportation, food services, and the like, to really ensure that we were able to be the first school division in Northern Virginia to return all of our students to school. If you look around at all of the other school divisions in the area, you will see that most of them are still working in two-day hybrids. But we are back five days with our elementary students, and we're back four days with our secondary students with a Wednesday for, for their hybrid learn, for their professional development. So I'm really proud of the work that our staff have done. And as a consequence of that, I believe that they need to be compensated. Because of the downturn in the economy last year, we were not able to give any kind of increment to our teachers or our staff in last year's budget. So this year, we are providing a step increase, which represents about a 2.5% increase. And then we're looking at doing about a 1.5% cost of living adjustment. So we've been able to pull our budget together, look at some backside cuts to be able to create a circumstance where we actually can fund a 1.5% COLA. And that, together with the step increase, averages about a 4% increase for all of our employees this coming year. And we're, we're very pleased to be able to do that for our staff. There are a number of things that have happened that are fixed costs that we need to be able to account for in our budget. Good news is, is that we did find some savings in our retirement account from the Virginia retirement system and, and the city retirement rate. But we are experiencing an increase in our health insurance rates of about $51,000. And then other post-employment benefits are going up by about $60,000. And so those are some things that we need to take care of as fixed rate increases. When we look at our enrollment, one of the things that we do know is that our enrollment did come down. And by the way, this is a picture of our socially-distanced students in our new cafeteria. But we know that our, our enrollment did drop this year rather significantly, particularly at kindergarten. Many of our families decided not to enroll their students in kindergarten this year because it was online. But what we are seeing is that our students are coming back. In fact, a significant number of students that were homeschooled have started to trickle back into our schools. And so we're seeing ourselves, seeing the City of Falls Church schools really bounce back. And we are expecting further increases as we move forward. So pay attention to that. We, we will continue to pay attention to that. And we know because we're the only school system that's back five days a week at the elementary school and four days a week at the secondary schools, that the likelihood of us gaining enrollment, whether it's through tuition-paying students or through people moving into the City of Falls Church, because we're the only school division that's doing the work that we're doing in the region, remains to be something that we expect to grow. Some investments that we want to really pay attention to in this post-COVID environment. And I say post-COVID, knowing that we are not out of the woods, knowing that it's still really important that we all get our vaccines. We continue to engage in appropriate mitigation strategies. But there are some things that we need to really pay attention to as a school division, as we build towards the future in what may be considered a post-COVID environment. And these additional investments cost about $341,000. And they are an English Language Arts pre-K-12 coordinator. So we have someone on our staff right now that, that is the coordinator of mathematics. Some of you may know Jen Fessenden. She does a tremendous job for us. And as a consequence, our math scores have really taken off. We anticipate that post-COVID, we're going to need to dig in a little bit further on English reading and language arts. So having someone to also focus on that area is going to be really important. Student mental health is, and social emotional health is something that we know post-COVID is going to be, is important to all of us. And we are currently paying attention to it. But we also want to put some resources towards it next year as well. So we are in the budget, including a social worker. And that social worker will work closely with our families to help students be referred out for a variety of different services and families referred out for a variety of different services. We're also including a new school counselor in our ratios. As, as we know that our school counselors are very important when working with students that are struggling. And then lastly, funding the continuation and replacement of our one-to-one student devices. We found that through, obviously, through the pandemic, how important technology is. And it's time to re-up our lease. And so we are having, we did put money into the budget to re-up our lease for our Macintosh computers. We also included $145,000 in our budget for custodial support at the new high school. We went from a high school that was old and smaller to one that is brand-new and bigger. So we now have 300,000 square feet that needs to be cleaned, and we don't have the custodial support to do that. So we are going to increase our custodial support for the high school. When we look at our starting point, and we look at all those things that we're putting into the budget, we have more budget requests than we have money. So it required us to go back and do some reductions and realignments internally. So we did review our salary savings through turnover. So anytime someone with more experience leaves and we hire someone with less experience, that is a savings for us. It's not how we hire people, but it does turn out to be a cost savings for us. And we were able to realize about $319,000 in additional savings through turnover. We do have some lower costs in employee benefits. We are eliminating a paraprofessional at the first grade based on enrollment. But we are moving that first-grade teacher to second grade, and that paraprofessional will be held harmless, and we will find a position for them through attrition. So while we've cut that position, we are able to find another position for that person. We do have a staffing reserve that we maintain, just in case there are bounces in enrollment. And we were able to bring down that staffing reserve by about $62,000. And we're adjusting our, our budget for contracted services by $100,000. So that gives us savings on the, on the internal side of about $693,000. So when you look at the school's advertised budget, the school board's advertised budget, on the left side, what you'll see are the budget revenues. And so we have revenue adjustments of about $1.5 million. And on the other side are those expenditures. So you'll see a step increase for eligible employees, the 1.5% cost of living adjustment, the employer's share of the health rate, and then some new investments. So there you'll see the language arts coordinator, social worker, school counselor, et cetera. And then we also have the savings included at the bottom. So you'll see that those two numbers balance, which is really important, obviously. But we are able to not only give our employees appropriate compensation, we're also able to provide some growth based on post-COVID impacts. And also at the same time. to provide some growth based on post-COVID impacts, and also at the same time, being able to provide appropriate custodial support for our, our new high school, even with the two and a half percent transfer from the general government. Excuse me. But our overall budget is growing by 3%, but that additional half percent is picked up through the backside adjustments that we've made and some additional state funding. I have included two pie charts in here because I think that they're important to note. On the left-hand side is the revenue. And again, the blue area in these pie charts represent the Falls Church local transfer to us. And again, that's the largest amount of money that we get for, for the schools comes from the City of Falls Church. The next largest is the state, and then there's federal fees and other beginning balance. But the one on the right is also equally important, and that is where do we spend our money? And one of the things that we do spend our money on, to the tune of about 86%, is it goes into salaries and benefits of our staff. We're really proud of the staff that we have. We're proud of the small class sizes that we're able to maintain. And as a consequence of maintaining those, those small class sizes, we do have more staff in ratio positions than other school divisions, but that is a priority for us in the City of Falls Church, and we continue to maintain those, those good class sizes for our students. Lastly, you'll see a budget calendar here, and you'll see some dates. We're getting closer to the, to the end here. So you'll see April 26th is the city council's adoption of the budget ordinance, including the school transfer. And then May 11th is a budget work session and the adoption of the, of the school's budget. And that is our final action as a school division. I did want to make sure that everybody knew, in, in terms of transparency, one of the things that we are committed to in the City of Falls Church schools, if anyone has any questions about the budget, if you go to fccps.org and go to our budget webpage, all of the budget documents are there. It's very transparent. We have videos of presentations that we've done previously. We also have the hearings that were held around our budget, and we would invite you to take a look at those. So with that, City Manager Shields, I will, I will stop and I'll turn it back to you for your presentation.
Well, thank you Superintendent Noonan. And before I go into the slides that we have on the general government side, let me just see if we do have any questions for Dr. Noonan and Susan, and maybe if you could moderate those if we do have any. Otherwise, we'll press on through and take questions at the end.
I see one hand raised from Tina. Tina, would you like to ask your question? You can go ahead and unmute.
Okay, I have it unmuted. Can you hear me all right?
Now we can hear you. Perfect.
Let me turn down my baseball game. It's terrible. I'm wondering if the school is going to have relief funding. I see in the cool new three-bucket memo, there's a reference to federal relief funding for K to 12. And if there are any ideas on that, if it's for real or an idea, might it offset anything in the budget besides the $125 for the waterproofing and the floors? Thanks.
Thank you for the question, Tina. We appreciate that. The question is, is it real? We think that it's real. We have been given some information to anticipate roughly, and Ms. Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's roughly about $180,000 that we are expecting in the next round of federal funding. Kristin, is that about right?
Yes, it's a little, a little bit lower, about $130,000.
Oh, $130,000. And then do you want to let Tina and the community members that are on know how we were going to spend that with respect to summer program and the like?
Yes, I would be happy to. When we look at the federal funding that we've received to date, we are including how we're spending that in our budget questions and answers. So you'll always be able to go there and find the information. When we look at the most recent round of stimulus funding, we intend to spend that in terms of learning recovery. So we're really enhancing the summer school options that we're providing this summer, really intending to do much more in terms of intervention with students. And then we'll continue that intervention as needed moving into next school year.
Thank you, and thank you for that question. The unfortunate part about the federal funding that the schools have received, and this is something that we advocated strongly during the process of, of the CARES Act II coming out, is that it is, it's unfortunate for the City of Falls Church, but I think if we think about it in the greater scheme, I understand why it came the way that it did. But the Title I funding formula is the funding formula in which the, the federal government dispersed this CARES Act money. And for those of you that are on the call that may not know what the Title I funding is, is Title I funding is for students that are in poverty. And because we have so few students as a percentage of our total population of students that are in poverty, the amount of money that we received as part of the CARES Act was relatively low. So $130,000 compared to Fairfax County that got multiple millions of dollars is a consequence of that. We did advocate with Don Byer, Representative Byer, and others to try to use a per-pupil allocation so that we got a certain set, a dollar amount per pupil, which is actually how the second CARES Act or the first CARES Act came. But unfortunately, we, we weren't able to do that. So in terms of equity, it's probably the most equitable way to disperse that funding, but I do want to let the community know that it did, it did come in lower than we anticipated because of the way the funds were distributed.
Thank you very much. I hope that answered your question, Tina. Does anyone else have a question right now, or shall we move on with Wyatt's presentation? I'm not seeing any Wyatt, so go ahead.
Well, thank you, and I'll share my screen in advance of our slides. Let me see here. Not sure why I'm not seeing the slides that I want to be able to use.
I saw it for a second there.
Right. So, there we go. Thanks for bearing with me. So we've got about 18 slides, and we'll, we'll have Kiran do some, Cindy do some, and I will do some. And I'll just hit some of the highlights to get started. Some of the key investments that are in the proposed 22 budget include investments in public safety, investments in the top recommendations of the Stormwater Task Force for, for flood mitigation, as well as green infrastructure, that is their, their latest update to the Stormwater Plan. We have investments in walkability and traffic calming. We do, are seeking to take care of our city workforce with compensation increase this year. We did freeze salaries last year in the pandemic budget. We have investments in responsive government, and, and the budget does fully fund the school board budget request. Where we are right now in terms of the advertised tax rate, the city council voted to have an advertised rate, which would reduce the current rate by 1.5 cents. So the advertised rate is $1.34. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. And a major feature of our capital improvements program is the state and federal grants that we've been able to bring to the city, and that's funding a lot of the improvements that you see throughout the city. I'll just give a quick overview and then turn it over to Kiran to talk about revenues. As Dr. Noonan just walked us through, the school transfer for request, which is funded with local taxes, will increase by just over $1 million or 2.5%. The general government budget is just under $1 million increase to $41.4 million, and that's a 2.3% increase. And this year, I've listed it here, affordable housing for the first time, and that I'm aware of, the city is trying to build into its operating budget a sustained contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund to meet the, the city's goals in that area. We've also been successful in getting an Amazon REACH grant to the city of $3.75 million, and we're applying for next year's round as well. And this $100,000 would be dedicated as a local match for the, for those funds through Virginia Housing. Debt service is at $14.2 million of the budget. And for anyone who's watched the budget over the years, we've traditionally had debt service at about $6 million per year. And with the new high school, city hall, and library, our, our debt service is now more than double what it normally is at $14.2 million. We do have a slight decrease this year, however, because we refunded some debt to take advantage of lower interest rates in the past year, and we also delayed some debt issuance because of, and just canceled some projects due to the pandemic last year, you know, with, with the budget that was adopted last year. And then one positive thing that's in the budget is we have a $6.2 million contribution to capital reserves, and those are really specific to the school capital reserves to help finance the high school. And those are in two components. One is the proffer for the Founder's Rope Project, which we expect to receive in September, and that is just over $1.8 million. And then the first payment, or rather, I should say, the second payment of the ground lease for West Falls will come to the city in the, in the coming fiscal year, and that's just over $4 million. So overall, the budget is growing with, with those increases to capital reserves by 8.3 million, but our operating budgets, which are the lines of top, are very modest growth, and I think fiscally disciplined growth of 2.5% for schools and 2.3% for general government operations. Ms. Bawa, if you could walk us through our revenues and, and just give me the signal when you want me to advance the slide.
Good evening. Sure, I'll do that. So the city's operating revenues on this chart, Slide 4, show the breakdown of the sources of funds that the city receives. The real estate revenues taxes constitute almost 58% of the total $105.8 million budget in fiscal year '22. Other local taxes make up roughly another 25%, a fourth of the total revenues. And the remaining revenues are coming from the state and federal funds, charges for services, and the use of fund balance. Other taxes in here also include utility taxes, cigarette taxes, recreation, hotel taxes. And I will go over some of the local taxes on the next slide. So just let's take a little closer look at our local revenues. Real estate is definitely seeing a growth in January 1, and I have another slide that will give us a breakdown of the increases. But overall, COVID-19 pandemic has caused certain revenues to drop precipitously in the last 12 months. However, we are seeing those revenues that are trending upwards and slowly returning to normal levels, such as personal property. We're seeing a growth in there. The budgeted levels for '21 were reduced significantly to account for decreases due to the COVID. And sales tax, we have seen a growth in that even during the pandemic due to increased grocery and online sales. Meal stacks in this quarter have come back to budgeted levels, still not anywhere close to pre-COVID levels, but are at least coming close to forecast. Business license tax also, as you'll see the B-pole, is over the budget. And this also, the budget was adjusted in fiscal year '21. The budget was adopted a little bit later in May, and it was adjusted to reflect the decreases. The exception being the hotel tax and charges for city services and fines and fees, and those we are still not seeing the rebound yet. And fiscal year '22 will continue to be a year where caution is exercised and we continue to monitor our revenues. Slide number six shows the total AV, assessed value of the real estate in the city, which is approximately $4.6 billion as of January of 2021, which is an increase of $121 million or 2.7% over January 1 of 2020, a year before that. So well over the half the growth in assessed value is due to new construction. The growth in assessed value reflects market appreciation of 1.1% and approximately $732 million of new construction, sorry, 72 million of new construction in the city. Overall residential assessed value has grown by 4.1% with market appreciation making up 3.5% of that. And overall, commercial assessed value has grown by less than 1%. With new, market saw a major decline of 5.9%, which was offset primarily by the new construction founders being a major portion of that. Assessed value of the apartments has declined by 2.8% with an overall assessed value increase of 2.7% over the prior year. Slide number seven provides details on the projected changes to the real estate tax rate. The current real estate tax rate, current as of now, is $1.355 per hundred dollars of assessed value. And the advertised rate, the proposed budget included a one-cent decrease and per council direction at the prior meetings and the budget deliberations, the advertised rate for the budget ordinance is 1.34, which is a drop of one and a half cents, which relates to an increase of $235 for an average homeowner tax bill net of new construction. And this translates to a saving of $112 for average homeowner with that one and a half cent decline, drop. Additionally, this means a 5.8% decrease in an average commercial and apartment tax bill. And showing this more graphically for a median homeowner real estate tax bill, Slide number eight, shows that fiscal year '22, the market increase of $235 from 9,829 to $10,064 for an average home value of $750,000, median home value for net of new construction. For, this chart provides a seven-year summary. So you can see the blue line on top provides the, shows the median homeowner tax bill, the increase over the seven-year window, and, and the red bars are the real estate tax rate, how it has moved over the seven-year window. So with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Mester.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to spend a moment on the Americans Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, because this federal funding to help respond to the pandemic and economic downturn certainly has been receiving a lot of focus since it was approved in March of this past year. It has, the bill itself, the plan, has a lot of components to it. We've seen stimulus, unemployment, there's transit money, assistance for rent and mortgage for those at risk of eviction, and as we briefly heard about for K-12 funding as well. There will be a large portion in this funding source, which we didn't have with the previous CARES and COVID funding relief, funding for state and local governments to help us recover. So this evening, we'll talk about the local piece and how it will benefit the City of Falls Church. There will also be $3 billion coming to the state, and so there'll be a lot of work and coordination with the governor and the General Assembly on how that funding will also leverage and assist our localities. And I hope for things like rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and education through those channels as well. So the funds that will be dispersed, the state and local governments, needs to be dispersed within the first 60 days from the bill signing, so that's May 11. within the first sixty days from the bill signing, so that's May eleventh. And that is for localities that directly receive other federal funding, like CDBG in particular. So all counties and many cities will receive that money directly by May eleventh. It remains to be determined if Virginia cities that are independent but are not entitled, we don't get CDBG funding directly, if our money is going to have to pass through the state. So that's why we've made this third and fourth bullet on this slide, because we may not get the money for a period of time. Well, we know we won't get it May eleventh as it stands right now. We're still advocating for that, but it will be later. It could be as far down as October if the General Assembly has to reconvene and appropriate the money so it could be distributed to us. Under the federal legislation, the first tranche to those that directly receive it have to go out May eleventh. Then the governor and states have an additional thirty days until June with two extensions if they can't convene the governing bodies. So you'll note that we are anticipating an out date so that we can plan. We do expect that the U.S. Treasury will release the actual guidance on how these funding can be spent by the May eleventh date, because we need to know how to certify it and how we can spend it for those receiving it directly. That will still apply to us. So we are hoping to know by May eleventh how it can be spent and what our allocation is for the City of Falls Church. Right now, we have received nothing from the U.S. Treasury, which is the official source. The estimates we've seen have come from congressional staff and various other national associations, but nothing official. We've seen a three million dollar allocation for the City of Falls Church, and we've seen a thirteen million dollar allocation in one analysis where we would get both. So to be conservative until we have a definitive allocation from the U.S. Treasury, we are planning on the lower amount, which is the three point one million you see on the slide. That is pretty consistent with what the federal funding is that we got during the last allocation of federal money, the CAREs Act. But that wasn't, that was not a direct local government assistance. So we've been advocating for it to be a higher amount, but we're planning conservatively. The legislation does provide four broad categories where this funding can be spent, but there's a lot of questions, and that's why we need the U.S. Treasury guidance. But in general, it can help us respond to public health emergency from COVID and economic, negative economic impacts is one category. Supplemental salary for essential workers who are responding to this emergency, this health emergency, and offset a revenue loss that a locality has experienced as a result of COVID, as Ms. Bawa was talking about with some of our revenue losses due to the economic downturn. And the fourth category is necessary investments, water, sewer, and broadband. Very broad categories that give us a sense where we can head, but still pending that guidance. And so as this, we're tracking it very closely, and we look forward to as soon as we have some detail, being able to work with council and the community. And with that, I'll pass the baton back.
Great. Well, thank you, Cindy. And, you know, just so people will be aware of it, Cindy has chaired the statewide committee on the kind of the CAREs money dispersments and has been very active working with all of our colleagues across the state to advocate for the city on these issues. Mayor Tarter also is the chair of the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, and the NVRC mayors and chairs have done a real service to Northern Virginia by convening key policymakers, whether they are senators, members of Congress, the governor, Secretary of Finance. They have brought them to the Northern Virginia mayors and chairs meetings to advocate for Northern Virginia and to make sure that they're aware of our issues here at the local level. And so that's been incredibly effective. I think all of our members of city council have been plugged in through the Virginia Municipal League and other venues just to, one, stay well informed on these issues, and, two, advocate for the city. So more to come on that. We wish we had a bit more certainty for this budget, but this is, Cindy's report really does lay out where we are right now. I'm going to talk, we have just a few more slides just to talk about where the money goes. And so in the city budget, this pie chart just lays out the kind of the main areas, education being the largest share, that's the transfer to the school board. Debt service now is fourteen percent of the budget, so this, these two components combined, school debt and general government debt. Public safety at sixteen percent, that includes fire and police. That's the next largest component of our budget. Public works, which includes paving all of our streets, maintaining all of our sidewalks, taking care of all of our buildings, five percent. Recreation parks and our library is five percent of the budget. HHS and community development, kind of completing out the horn of some of the key services that people recognize. Some of the key investments in this budget, the city council has for many years now really prioritized improving mobility and accessibility across the city, new sidewalks, bike lanes, safer streets. And so we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for new sidewalks. We're sustaining our hundred thousand dollars for neighborhood traffic calming projects. I would note in the area of neighborhood traffic calming, these are the dollars that we're administering right now, including a six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar grant, which is to carry out sort of a neighborhood-wide series of neighborhood traffic calming installations for the Greenway Downs neighborhood, basically from Rosemary down to Westmoreland. So we've also in this budget tried to increase our paving budget. We, really since the recession, we have not had enough money to keep up with paving across the city, so we have increased that amount to four hundred thousand dollars in the budget. We do get that from VDOT, but that money can go in a lot of different directions, and we're trying to make sure some of those core things like paving our streets is where those dollars go. Some of the main grants that are in the budget, the Park Avenue Great Streets Project is a Northern Virginia Transportation Authority grant of eight point three million. That is to underground utility lines and put in new street scape, basically from the library to the State Theater on Park Avenue. So that's a major project. We also have a grant fund, funding for improved walkability on Shreve Road, basically to tie in the WNOD to the West Falls project, where most of our children, I think, probably will be accessing the high schools through a nice safe route from the WNOD up to the campus. That's the idea with that grant. That's in conjunction with Fairfax County. At long last, we're going to replace the South Oak Street Bridge. Those who've watched our budget process for a while, we've been trying to do this for years, and, but we've finally successfully gotten enough grant money that that project is a go in the coming year. So for the school administration, we'll obviously work very closely with you because that will impact TJ Elementary School access when that bridge is under, being rebuilt. Some of the things that are happening right now that you can see, the South Maple and South Washington Street intersection, that is about to get underway right now. We've gotten full approval and bids for that project. Fourth Washington and Columbia Street, that's an intersection improvement project, which also is in the bidding process right now. These are all, by the way, grant funded. Broad Street pedestrian crossings, this is to have hawk signals to make it easier to cross Broad Street, where we don't have, you know, where we have long stretches where there's not a signal that makes it safe for pedestrians. So we would install those to give people a safe way to cross Broad Street. The South Washington Street Project, if you've been down there recently, they're at Fox's Music and the, so basically, the north side of Route twenty-nine is, the street scape is going in right now. It's very exciting to see that. We, on the other side of the street, which will happen next, is the Intermodal Plaza, where we'll have a lot of history and good, good design for safe pedestrians, but also ways to sort of tell the history of that part of the city, including the history of the Tanner Hill area and other features of that part of the city. And then we have the Dual Trails Project that's happening right now. That's being done by the Park Authority. But we also are going to be shrinking the streets where the WNOD crosses our city streets to make it safer for the users of the trail. Some investments in public health and safety, the Use of Force Review Committee provided recommendations on a whole host of matters, and we are going to be implementing those over a number of years. But one of the things we did want to get done, and the police force really supports this, is having body worn cameras, and a lot of that will be funded with grant dollars. But there is a local match, and that's built into the budget. One of the big struggles we have in the department is having police officers take time off the street so they can do the photo read and the school bus stop arm camera citations. You have to spend hours in a room watching those videos. We'd like to bring in a part-time police officer, probably a retiree, who could take that work off of our existing police force and take care of that function so that our police officers are not occupied doing that. We have public safety aides, which are, do our crossing guard duties throughout the city. They also do parking enforcement, and we want to also now shift animal control to this team of public safety aides as well. We're expecting the retirement of our longstanding animal control officer, Becky Keenan, this year. And if she does choose to retire, we'll backfill that with another public safety aide. And then lastly, we are trying to fortify our Office of Emergency Management. This year has been a year of kind of unrelenting emergency management needs, and we want to fortify that office with a, basically, a deputy or an emergency coordinator that would work with Joe Carter, who's our Director of Emergency Management. We are right now working with Arlington County to explore joining Arlington County as part of a regional nine-one-one dispatch. And some of the reasons to consider that is as we shift to next-gen nine-one-one, it becomes increasingly sophisticated, more and more capital costs associated with it and staff work associated with it. So we're busily exploring that option right now. We will not have a determination on the pros and cons in making that shift by April twenty-six, budget adoption. I think it's going to take a little bit longer to work through to make sure that if we take that option, we do it properly and appropriately. In terms of building inspections, this is a key, very busy shop for the city, plan review and inspections. We've had two retirees this year that have caused us to have a bit of a backlog in processing permits. We have actually hired two replacements there, but we are also adding a position for permit intake to help with customer service and our permit function. That comes out of the building permit reserves. That's paid entirely by development in the city. In the area of equity and inclusiveness, I mentioned earlier the Amazon Reach Grant of three point seven five million dollars. That's not yet in the budget because we'll do that through a budget amendment. But what is in the budget is a local match of a hundred thousand dollars. It's a sustained form of funding for affordable housing to help match that grant. We also have in Wreckin' Parks, twenty-five thousand dollars to increase our scholarships for low-income households so everyone can participate in our Wreckin' Park programs. We do list here forty-two thousand dollars for additional tax relief. We don't have any policy changes associated with that. What this represents is that our actual experience of the seniors and veterans and disabled who are taking advantage of our existing tax relief programs and the actual cost of that is higher than what's budgeted in past years. Investment in our employees includes a three percent merit increase and a three point five percent step increase for police uniformed staff. We're covering our health insurance, and we do have the FTEs that I mentioned in the Police Department, the Building Inspector, or the Permit Intake Person. We also do have an HR position, a halftime position, that we're adding to HR to help with recruitment. And in the library, we're adding custodial services because we'll have a larger library next year when we move into the new Mary Riley styles. Our last slide is on the Stormwater Fund. We do, as the Stormwater Task Force recommends, we have eight point five million dollars in projects for flood mitigation. Those are the six priority projects. We are asking for a two percent rate increase in FY twenty-two, and that is not really so much to pay for these, for the major projects. We're still in engineering for them. But in the past year, we've carried out a number of smaller projects to deal with spot flooding issues, and so we have been running through our Stormwater Fund at a greater rate. That two percent increase would represent about five dollars for the median homeowner. We do have larger increases that are anticipated in coming years as we try to finance these major projects that are coming down the line. So the city council is watching these rates very closely and wants to mitigate their impacts on our homeowners to the best extent possible. So as Dr. Nuna noted, we're getting close to the end of the budget process. On Monday next week, April nineteenth, the city council will hold a work session and do final budget markup. And then on April, and that gives final direction to staff to prepare the documents for final action. On April twenty-sixth, we'll have a public hearing on the budget, and the city council will give consideration and second reading on the budget. So that's our presentation for tonight. I'm sorry, we might have taken a bit more time than advertised. Let me stop and see if there are questions, and hopefully we can respond to them.
I am not seeing any questions right at this moment. So as a reminder, to ask a question tonight, it's as easy as raising your hand through the MS Teams platform, which should be at the top of your screen if you are on your laptop. And you could also put in the chat that you have a question. We can call on you, or you can put your question directly into the chat. Let's give it another moment and see if any questions pop up. And if you think of a question later, you can always email us at budget@fallschurchva.gov, and we'll get an answer to you, no problem. And as a reminder, all of our materials are on the city's website, fallschurchva.gov/budget. All right. I am not seeing any questions, so I think we are ready for wrap-up.
Okay. Well, Susan, thank you for moderating this town hall. It's always very helpful and for your publicity for it as well. We do appreciate everybody's involvement. This will be posted on the city's website, and we'll promote that as well, so those who are not here live can watch it. And so with that, Dr. Nuna, do you have any closing words that you would like to make?
I guess I would just say thank you for everybody who was here tonight and participating. And thanks to the community and all the support that you have given the schools through this pandemic. It has been, obviously, nothing short of challenging, but I'm very excited and happy to be, obviously, the first school division in Northern Virginia to return to school and to have our kids back and see their social, emotional learning and wellness sort of come out as we return. So I'm excited for the remainder of the year, and next year, we will be returning as normal, barring some sort of resurgence of the pandemic, but looking forward to a good year next year. Thanks for the conversation on the budget.
Well, thank you. And thank you to you and your team for your work on the budget and the presentation tonight. And everybody, thanks for tuning in. We look forward to Budget and Finance Committee meeting tomorrow morning at nine a.m., and then the council work session on the nineteenth, and then final action on the twenty-sixth. Please do send us your questions, and in the meantime, stay safe and have a good evening. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, everybody.